For summer help, part time, is that correct?
Right.
That's, that's about all we need is three people. Alright, and um I know school's not out right now, but I'd like to council's permission to seek hiring of three individuals for summer help, and it'll be part time.
Make a motion that you do, okay?
One second, have a motion.
I'll make my notes there. Alright, Jim.
How, how many for summer help?
Three. 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 Yeah, that'd be plenty. So much space in the vehicles. Alright, Jim. We have, we have a motion and a second, so if all, all those in favor will allow me to hire three people. We'll put that out. What do you think the starting date should be? I mean, we'll, let's get a vote on that for all of them, everybody. Any votes, you announce. What's gonna be our starting date for summer help? When the summer vacation starts. Your first, I can start on first, uh, first pay period in, in June. See who I can get, now sometimes, uh, these young men, and maybe even, uh, go get on to one about what came to the office, maybe get an extra one for the office as well, give them some lady, you know, lady a chance. They might wanna go on their little summer break for a week or what have you, I allow that, I have it in the past, and then they can report, so.
June 3rd of London.
June 3rd, well.
Or, or 3rd of Monday.
The 3rd of Monday.
Or it'll be Saturday, Saturday.
Let's just look at a calendar, folks. You'd think I'd know that, as many kids as I got, grandkids. June the 3rd, let's see what I have down for that. Nothing but a birthday, so I don't know. Imagine that, I got a birthday on it, but anyway, but anyway, after school's out, give them a chance, we'll have them here in June, helping out. F-150 bids, what was that about?
I'm assuming the F-150 that we had replaced our old one, the gray one that's down there.
We need to put it out for bids, right?
It needs to be put out for bids, it needs to, uh, you know, get done with somebody that can use it or use parts from it or something.
Alright, then, um, I would, uh, I would suggest that we put a notice out that we're accepting bids for it, let them come look at it, and then next council meeting, maybe accept the highest bidder.
I'll make a motion, we put the old F-150 out for bids.
Alright, any further discussion on that?
Steve, if you could, uh, get me whatever, for me or Stacy, get Stacy the pertinent information for it, she could put it on the Facebook page, and one more mileage, years, et cetera.
Picture. All those in favor, do it. Alright, your votes. It's just rusting away down there, somebody will want to report to it. Anyone from the fire department here, or does anybody have anything else for names? Moving along, fire department? Anything, Steve's a good representative of the fire department, anything going on?
Uh, I don't think there's anything going on. This month, we've had several people that did go to our fire school here, a lot of them got certified, we got three or four maybe new firemen that's totally certified now. And we got a couple more that, that will probably be going in. There ain't nothing new other than us going through that, and we're still doing our trainings every month.
They're very active down there. I've seen them there quite a bit. The night of the big rain, the big shower, they'd be standing there looking up at the sky, they didn't have anything else to do.
Well, those nights, they, they keep that picked up right on the road, they keep all these areas checked, make sure no one's flooded or trapped.
Yeah, you know I'm kidding you, right?
Yeah, we did activate, on that night of the showers as well, we did activate our boats and our swat water tags.
They were ready to go.
So, Logan activated theirs, and if we had to go with them, we went, and the state police did use us and our boats a month ago, so.
They used them several days.
For an incident that they had, so, it is, it is used, it is going good.
Fire department's very active with, uh, in the town, in the county, and, uh, I hear reports otherwise, but I know they're not true. Because I, you know me, when I hear it, I come and ask. Yeah.
How many members do you have now, Steve?
Uh, I think the last time we lived, it was like, 29, 30 members. Yeah, about four juniors, and they keep them training, they just went through training with them the other day at the station, uh, with their juniors and everything, and they got another training on up Sunday.
We have, we have two buildings within this town that are very visited. One of them's the police department, especially whenever the donut truck runs, and, uh, and the fire department. We get good crowds there, very friendly place, so, I like it like that.
Um, Steve, I'm gonna talk to Devin and another guy down there, and I'll talk to you about this. Um, can you find out from Daniel, can I just go ahead and load about 10 sections of that hose that's, that's not, we call it, uh, usable?
I'll, I'll get hold of him and let you know as soon as I get a, get a manual from him.
Cause I'll go through gas, and I'll get a reducer from a two and a half to an inch, and I'll get me a nozzle. Pretty good.
You're welcome.
Anything else, fire department? Code enforcement's not here, Devin must be working, he's been working quite a bit.
He works, uh, usually every, every evening, I think, like, from Friday to Monday, or Thursday to Monday or something, he's off, but the rest of the times, he's working night shift, and he don't get off till sometime late in the day if they have to make him work the double. Devin sometimes can be hard to get hold of, because he works hard now, not.
He would got a beat on his door, I don't know what he puts in his ears, but he won't wake up for nothing.
Okay.
Alright, anyway, moving along, when it comes to the water department, you have the minutes there, um, and when it comes to the water sewer projects, the, um, I signed the papers the other day to, to do the advertisement for the bids. So, those will be going out soon, I've been moving right along. Any questions? About water sewer? Do we really need to make a motion, though?
For that, for every report. Like, like you've said before, as long as it's consistent, I, I don't think we need a motion to accept minutes and a vote for it, but.
Minutes, that I'm talking about, when it comes down to reports.
Right, right, the reports, yeah, we, we don't have to, it's just, as long as it's consistent one way or the other, either can or can't.
I, I think to speed things up, anybody got any questions about the water department, so that's why the report's gonna be, and moving right along? Tracy Vickers, community center. Ms. Bell.
You want me to be my full report, or?
Come up here and stand, do your report, so you can be on camera. No, I'm kidding you, I'm kidding you.
Um, okay, so everything's continuing with the seniors, um, a lot of them are being really active, walking, uh, doing different, um, exercises. Four new, uh, volunteers completed their foot hammer class, and that will be good for three years. Dana with WBU Extension, and Mel with Original Data Report Center, they were here on the 28th of March, will be back on the 18th. Um, and Dana has, uh, plans to go down with diabetes and walking in the evenings, that'll be posted once she gives me a definite on dates. Um, let's see, I will be here along with 18th, I'll be at the Logan Leadership Meeting, that, the 3rd Thursday of every month, uh, for the next eight months, I'll be doing that. A different location, um, every 3rd Thursday. Uh, the sprinkling was a big success, we had lots of vendors inside and out, I think Sally said she had more vendors this time than she did last year. Um, the large item pickup is set for tomorrow, April 17th. Councling of the schedule for April 18th, 19th, and 20th, we've got all the stuff here, if anybody needs to, like also, in the last meeting, that can be any day, it doesn't have to be on those days, if you choose, if you wanna do some, we have, um, special bags, pictures, and everything that's located here, um, if you would need to use any of that. Um, let's see, a lot of the ladies, they work on flower beds, and that's a project that we can restart all around town, um, with the weather getting warmer. Um, important dates were posted, uh, through the Athlete Festival on Facebook pages, there's also flyers up there if anybody needs them, uh, with those dates. And there's a couple events that's coming up in May, uh, the Chapo on the move with the Cupcake Contest, all the details, um, are on flyer that's up here. And then on Thursday, May the 9th, they might include calls of each, and again, all of the information is on the flyers here. The only thing that I would think is, you all, I talked to, um, Sabrina, every representative with the fireworks, and she would just need to know, um, a budget, for you all to set a budget for this year's fireworks, uh, because she takes all that into account when she's planning her routes, when they deliver fireworks up here, Logan, to make sure that they can all send what, however many people that she needs to get. Just because of the requirements.
Let's hold right there then, about when it comes to fireworks. Budget, last year it was roughly seven thousand bucks, roughly, roughly, I don't have the exact figures in, uh, but I mentioned July the 4th is on the Thursday, which I think July the 4th, I'll be July the 4th. Alright, um, what kind of budget would you all like to set for fireworks? Any suggestions? Remember, everything's went up.
Yeah, last year we done pretty good, so, I would say no more than eight thousand.
I have, I have eight thousand. And if that's, if, if that isn't enough for what we'd like to have, we can always come back. But that's a good starting point.
And with the fireworks for July 4th, um, that is, uh, the day that we have to use air guys to do it, we can't have them to do return teach all, just because where's the board? Um, it's quite a bit more for them to do a turn.
I understand, I think they did a very good job last year.
Yep.
Alright. Steve was allowed to, uh, bring his crew in, we'll put it that way. So, and, uh, but I, I, I think that, um, Steve doing that, he falls under our insurance and everything else, but I think he needs a little bit more. He compensated a little bit more, since he has taken.
Sabrina even wanted to talk to you probably, because they didn't have as many guys to send in extra help with, with a crew, so she, that thing was. Um, and I think Sabrina, um, had talked with you about, just because where he is a fire technician,
Mm-hmm.
Um, if they don't have someone, you know, that can come with one of their guys to help them, they can, they can kinda contract one of their guys, like, through with their stuff.
Okay.
But I have the impetus to pick them.
So, I've got a budget for eight thousand?
Is there a certain day they need to know this by?
No, she just wanted to go ahead and know, kind of roughly, that way she can figure out how many routes she, like, load the orders there's, if she can send stuff down this way, because she'll have, like, uh, when they do, like, the regatta, like, all that stuff, everything comes for, they all use them also. So then she can plan how many trucks she's gonna have to have, and what size trucks she's gonna have to have, kind of this way, just because they're down on a lot of people. So, she didn't tell me, like, just the center of the banner, a route.
Right, when, from where they come.
Right.
They load a couple, just like a UPS truck, number deliveries on one truck, and here they go with the route, so, that's why they want to know on the bank.
I'll second that motion.
Eight thousand. Do I have a second?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I'll put the eight, be in second. Any further discussion on fireworks, and they will be on July 4th, correct?
Yes.
Good deal.
Alright, I'll just, my picture, because I always check with, I know the last few years we've used, uh, Riley Joe and Teresa's property, I always like to make sure with them before I go over everything.
And that rolls right into.
Challenges with any of that stuff, you also have to, I think you.
That's all contingent upon getting a piece of property, just set them off. Alright, any further discussion? There are none, call for a vote. Alright. Any votes?
Alright.
Continue on with your report.
Okay. Alright, so, everything, um, I do have Lincoln County cloggers, they're gonna come back, and we had to reschedule just because too, they're, uh, we need to just come down with. And then, I'll let them just kind of touch on the, uh, the verification, like, with the ladies, there's several of us that have been working on, uh, flower beds, some of them being one out with different areas, but there's a plan to do different spots in town, especially when you first come into town, uh, at the town signs, and then this sign that's up here, uh, to make sure that those sign, but.
We, we actually have, um, the north end of town, south end of town. We have what comes off of the, uh, what's, what's called, right there around the tower, in that area, where you come off, with the northbound ramp, and then around the police station, what have you, like there, crossroads or the southbound.
And there's a sign at, uh, just past the school, um, across.
Yeah.
That we always try to, the guys also make sure that they accept, they're too, so.
Alright, um, cleanup, as she talked about, the 18th, 19th, 20th, anybody can come in anytime and ask for materials, bags, pickers, gloves, and, um, we'll give them to you. And tie the bags up, don't leave them in the middle of the road, leave them to the side, and then we'll, we'll get them picked up.
Yeah, the special bags work, and everything that I mentioned, um, is posted on both of the pages, the town and the vehicle page, and then there's flyers that are up there, but it will also, somebody will fire instead of the personal page.
Now, um, and of course you've covered beautification of bears, town cleanup, right there. I'd like to commend the solid waste of 40. Couple of people in particular, I won't name their names, but, uh, two landmarks have been removed, as you haven't noticed, the boat at the north end of town, and the recliner appears to park. They're gone. Yeah.
How long that boat been on that hill?
Didn't anyone have any idea who that boat belonged? Because they locked on doors.
That boat's, I know it, you know, for 10 years.
On the mound. It had become a landmark, when you see the boat, it was getting close. But anyway, big thanks to the solid guys, I really appreciate that. And there is, um, a plan to take care of the encampments down there, if someone's wondering about that. That's a little tricky, but, and I have, uh, someone sitting right next to me will vouch for the fact that that's kind of their property in a way, they're on, they're on public land, I mean, it might look like trash to us, but they have, uh, their civil rights. Needless to say, those people know what they're doing. Alright, any other comments, questions about beautification?
Uh, large item pickup is tomorrow, correct?
Correct. Large item pickup means, you know, one, two, three items, doesn't mean that you. Yeah, like, what about tires, Steve, what we gonna do about tire?
We can take the tires up there, the dump will just charge a, uh, certain fee per size of the tire, but they didn't take them tires, the only thing they will not take is anything with freon, or gas cans, or gas paints, or anything like that.
Like an old air conditioner?
Yes, they, they'll only take those if they have a red tag on it, show them, and have the person's name of who removed the freon.
How about refrigerator freezers?
No, they will not take them either.
That's right.
We take them down to the shop, to the yard, and Mark called one of you guys that works at Marathon, and there's another on Tim's fork, he'll call them down and come and get it, and they'll come and get it, get it out of there.
Do the tires have to be all three?
No, they can be on the red.
Interesting.
Used to be.
Right, I, I heard one about Canal County's pickup, uh, this weekend, and they, they said all three for them, so, just thought I'd, a question. But they're probably not taking them to the dump, they're probably taking them to a rubber recycler. That I don't know, cause.
They're separating recycling out there. We just included with all the trash. Anything else? Any citizens, any residents? Uh, no, 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 I'm sorry, that's what I said, yeah, we got the report yet, yeah, we, we still have financial report, I want to hear some good news.
I'll go out and see if I can find you some, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll do what I can. In front of you is financial report for the month of March. Again, March is not a great collection month, I always send in the cash receipts, I give you an idea of what money came in from the various sources. We collected 70 grand, and our expenditures in the month is usually more than the 70 grand. So, that means, that's why we have the home rule money, that's why we do what we do, because that's set aside to pay the other expenses that are out there. So, but I take a look at the total. Uh, the first hole is, are we collecting the revenue we're anticipating to collect? The answer is yes. Uh, our home rule budget is 325, we're already at 300. And we, and April's our last big month, so we'll exceed what we budget. Uh, our BNO, we budgeted 360, and we're at 320. Are we going to exceed our budget? The answer is yes. Our garbage, we budgeted 310. Are we gonna exceed that? The answer is yes. But the good news, our revenue sources are, are holding very solid, the big, big things that we do, uh, even paying for a new truck, we are still showing a surplus on the garbage, so, we're doing well with that. Our profit, and again, it's not the amount that we see over the amounts spent, it was five thousand bucks, and we budgeted for a deficit of 185,000. And we budgeted knowing we were spending our, which we have done, and we have done some improvements. The other thing we did make budget was getting money, as early as we did, from the opioid. We haven't been given clear direction how to spend that yet. Alright, there, there, will, those will come, and I think we'll find ways to spend it. Uh, so financially, we are in very good condition. What I will be doing at the next, the council meeting, I will be bringing some budget adjustments for your approval. And what we wanna do, and I'm giving you the, the highlight, in that we have more revenue sources. And the, the major thing in our budget process, make sure we have money set aside to cover expenses that may come in, in the months of, uh, May and June. Uh, the biggest thing, the biggest no-no is to not have money allocated to those various, uh, parts. And we never know, if we have an emergency in June, sometimes it falls after, we don't, we can't change our budget. So I will make sure we have as much money set aside for that going forward. As I said, we had planned to be over spent, over what we took in 195,000, and we're not gonna, we're actually gonna spend less than that this year. So, it, it's a good financial report, I'm very pleased to say. Uh, we will, I don't know when the auditor, I know the auditor asked for an extension, I will get some more stuff ready for them, now that April 15th is yesterday. I may be able to do accounting again. Uh, but, but again, and then we'll get that started too, by the way, are the, had the accounting firm retired? So, I don't know what that means, but I do know he has two boys working for them, so, one of the things, you don't need to lose another accounting worker. Uh, there are only 29 of them, so I want, I don't care if you like them, or you don't, you don't need another, because who are they gonna bring in? So, at least we know. But I was told that Mike retired, so, that's what I got, Mr. Mayor, and then I will, again, next month I'll bring in the budget, uh, adjustments, and the other thing we have to do tonight, if I'm, I'm, that item is not on the agenda. I handed a, uh,
It's all in the running.
And that lovely report's called a levy order and rate sheet. We don't have to talk about the budget for next year, we did that the last meeting. What we have to do, this is the time that they, we got our notice from the, uh, state audits office, they accepted our budget, now we have to, to what they call lay the levy. And we don't take an action today, we don't send it to them, by tomorrow, they get very nasty, is that you can't collect your property tax, uh, revenue. And I want the 137,000 that, that's going to come, because that would hurt my budget next year, and we need that passed today. And then, again, they give us 24 hours, what Phillip will do, he'll sign it, and hopefully send it to them, I sent it to them.
Yep.
Alright, you send it to them, that way they can't say they didn't get your email.
There you go.
I'd rather you send it to them three times than no times. The thing that we have here, uh, our, the property values in, in our town has gone, gone up a little bit. And we know that, if you look at the, the first number's 11.88, uh, cents per thousand, the maximum of us 12.50. Okay, when we're less than that, and we had a couple years ago, we budget, we were able to charge 12.50, we're only allowed to make 4% more in our property values than we did the year before. So that's why you see a different number than the 12.50, so the good news is, is they've raised the values of the property, and as we add ex, uh, property, and as things are grown and built, when the property values go up, and I mean, our base goes up. So, we could have, uh, held a public hearing, and to go back to the 12.50, I'm really not sure we'd wanna have, what do you mean, you're raising property tax? No, it's a lot, no, no, you're raising property tax, and I don't think you wanted that. And we're still getting more money than we did, uh, on, on our last budget cycle. So, that's what this is, and I tell you that the good news is the value of what is inaccessible in our town has gone up. And that is, that, that, that is the met part of it. So I do need to, you to, uh, to, uh, get, get a motion and a second to pass the levy order, so we, Phillip and I can do what we do, so we fill that, uh, for the next fiscal year.
Alright. You've heard Mr. Val. You know what's needed of entertaining motion to prove.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second. Any discussion, questions? There are none, call for a vote, let's hit the levy, yea or nay, all those in favor?
Alright.
You announce.
Thank you.
I'll sign this one, and send it all up, this copy.
Yes.
Alright, council, does anybody have anything else with Mr. Val? There are none, I'm sure he'd like to go home and get him some rest.
Amen, uh, Mr. Mayor, I was up till 3:00 this morning doing what I do, so, uh, my dogs like it, because I was up with them, but, 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 the rest of the cameras.
Do appreciate you.
I appreciate you all, uh, and thank you. You know where I am, I need, uh, I need.
I got your number.
Well, I live two miles away.
How was the weather up there Thursday night, by the way?
It wasn't as bad, the last two storms that blew through weren't as bad as, they were worse in South Charles.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My wife was in South Charles when the tornado came through. Uh, and I was talking to one of my employees, and they went, they, I heard the sire, siren in South, uh, South Charleston go off. And she looked at my wife, and I'm not going to the basement, I don't care. But again, the tornado in South Charleston, in.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm sitting next to, I got all these to my left, his phone went off, this is his wife, she works over in South Charleston, over in that area. And I heard, you couldn't help but hear her talking, she's a little loud, talking about tornado, she said, I'm going home, and he said, no, you're not.
You go to the basement, or you?
Go to the basement, stay right there, you know, yeah.
And then I went to work the next day in South Charleston, didn't have any power, and let me put it to you this way, that's a scary place, but nobody worked. You felt like, you know, the zombies had come and already cleared out the human beings, and there wasn't anything going on, and.
Traffic was moving right nice.
It was not well, except, there wasn't a light coming out of Johanna, so it was moving really well.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, I, I, we were semi-involved in that too, but, uh, no, it didn't matter, but, of all the, we usually get stuff.
Usually have it the worst, but now my, the people I know, my, my family and what have you, they didn't complain the first bit this time, usually they're out there fixing their kayaks, everything else that went down the road.
Yeah, well, we've been up there where my wife has moved, trying to get up, let it get up to our house, and that, that wasn't that bad. But it's still wet.
It was wet?
It's always gonna be, but, no, hidden valley wasn't bad, this time.
I'm glad. We got it all over on this side of the river.
Yeah, we did.
Alright, brother, be careful going home.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right.
I use your, I'm, I'm, since I leave tomorrow, so I didn't have a chance to talk to her while you're sleeping with Karen.
Do we have any, Stacey, answer present?
Uh, no.
All right, we're almost halfway through. We're going, we're going on for just a little bit more. Old business, simple grants, the proposal. Anyone in council had a chance to look at them and want to entertain? Having them come back?
I will say I do like the idea of them better than previous people we had. Because we're paying them not for a chance at grants initially, but for them to do research and find the grants and give us a plan. There's an actual product we're getting at the end of it, that initial investment.
I agree with that.
You want to entertain having them come and.
Actually having them come and present to us and talk more with us. I, I wouldn't make that motion. Would we want to do that at a special meeting?
I'll take that and yeah, I agree. You should have a special meeting for that.
Or reach out to them and since they've been talking to you, anyone there available?
Several have been talking.
Of course, I got their email too. I can, or.
There you go. Believe me, I talked to enough people there. You won't see my lips. All right, we got a motion to have them come and present, got a second, and maybe do it with a special meeting. Once we speak with them, then we can find out their schedule and maybe ours, coordinate something. Is that okay? Any further discussion, question? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. How long will it take you to go through yours, Phil? Ten minutes?
Oh, you want to take a break first?
Well, I was going to ask you if it's long, it'll take ten minutes.
No, I don't know. So let's go ahead and I'll make a motion to take a break. Actually, I'll start going. Five minute break.
I'm going to haul him to the place. What happened here?
We didn't want to have him meet you to it.
I don't see that.
That cushion chair makes it easier too.
Right? Oh, I've, I've got a request. Can we, Carla there doing the form because she might want to go to this. Move it around.
I have no problem with that.
We've gone her all the way to the bottom. I'm sure she'd like to go if she wanted to go. Ms. McCoy?
Yes.
Would you be up for going next?
Sure.
All right, we'll move you around once here.
I would like to get a picture with, with you and the council members and.
If you get a donation, you want a picture. If we turn your weight, you probably don't.
If I don't get a donation, I want a picture of y'all.
It's, it's a very good thing. I've already given, you know that.
Yes. It is very, I mean, what we've been, I never realized that we had that in our area.
Really?
No, I never knew. Like, oh, I never needed it. But I never knew that this was taken in our area. So I was working there and that was just back in December. And now my son, he is the director of the A R E for Logan County, Logan. That's my son and I didn't, I wasn't aware of that either. Bro, I did not know any of that. What mostly much obvious, like little communities that Logan County know, that we exist and what we did. A lot of people aren't aware of it.
They're working with children?
I've been banking for twenty years. This is my first experience. So I begin either.
Search for your spot in the back. We have that spot.
I'm worried, I'm comfortable to do it, but it's making so emotional that now that I've been doing it, I feel like. So that makes you feel bad. Yeah, well, well, I know what I'm saying. Yeah, oh, she tells us, she works at our office. And.
I'll start, I'll start helping out.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, now, we're not even West Logan, Councilman or, by the way, you can say it now. We have to back it.
Have an issue with it? I was trying to make sure how we. Between, so people listening, but all the conversations being had amongst the audience.
There was a few, there was a.
You need to straighten the bits of the block.
That's how long it's at.
That's all of it. What they say? Four, four, seven, seven, eight, four, eight, four, eight, four, eight. Eight, three, loud.
You gotta write the sock.
Yeah.
Sure. Your answer's good. Just, just suggestion. So with this, the social media. We should because, you know.
This is the first time I saw.
I copied it from somebody else and I'm just like, oh, no.
That's why, that's why I'm glad he's here tonight, so he can read it and be like.
Oh, really?
Get messed up.
And I like it. Oh, my free speech privacy of citizens. Completely different. Yeah. And it should be. Yeah. If you want to listen to the person, it's all right. If you want to listen to the person, it's a property. Yeah. I, I have heard some personal reports that I will only believe when I see them. The recorders, I, I've had some buddy message. Last night. It said, this buddy doesn't like. Well, super big word for my heart, right? It went to the. Love White Castle. So I love White Castle. Of course, probably because I've not, never, you know, had White Castle growing up. You know, I get to be enveloped in like, man, this little thing is great. If I had them my whole life, probably different.
Yeah.
Now I went to a White Castle, what was the first one? Went to Columbus maybe? Kill a copy of that. Ugh. This place I got to try it. I, I, I loved it. I, I've.
You gotta eat them fresh. If you don't eat a White Castle fresh, that just turns this big blob of grease.
The, the burgers, the, the little fish burger sliders they have. Don't do it. Yeah. I won't even drive a chicken sliders. Well, that, that sounds better than fish. But I've never had a problem with fish sandwiches before. Never more with White Castle. Never more.
Too rich for my boy. The big thing now. My, my wife loves to bark. If she can get points. Wendy's ass.
Wendy's, yeah.
Oh, she's been burning Wendy's ass. And it's so easy. I mean, everything's already in there, you know?
Tell you, but now that spot has one.
Yeah. And, and she's, she's always got to use her.
Well, you're worried I'll get. They have figured out how to use that, so if she's watching, she knows that.
She ain't watching me.
And, and but you have McDonald's one?
Yeah.
The food is much cheaper on that than it is going to the store. But. On the other side of that place.
But how far away is it?
Right. Right. Well. I'm just saying, if you happen to be driving by one, it's better to park your car before you get in the line.
Here's the dangerous thing about the Wendy's ass. They're been where you want them. Just go and go in there and tell them, J M ordered it.
Yeah.
And they hand it right to you.
Yep. You don't even.
In my family, that's where it gets fancy.
You can, you can do the DoorDash part of it now. You don't even have to use your own gas to get it.
Yeah.
It's just hard for me to believe that there's drivers for that down here.
Are you kidding me? That DoorDash stuff?
Yeah. When I was, when I was up by Akron. They, they couldn't get drivers for.
Really? I'll tell you, the, the one that can make you the most is that Home Delivery for a while. Oh, yeah, you can get on that and they'll give you a route. All you do is like the U P S operators. And people even get tips and everything else.
Yeah.
Had two daughters, two, two of my daughters. They did that for a while. Then they got tired.
And if you're in college and you have people in a little bit of spare time, that's why it make money.
And whenever, and they go like, well, we, we need you to do this route. And I don't want that. Well, how about taking this? No, I'll take that.
Right.
Let you pick, pick and choose.
Right.
Let's call the herd back.
I wanted to sleep on the other side. One shoulder's hit. Yeah, I tell you. You're getting the old thing for nothing. Between the two party chiefs that are all this, we've come with the conclusion that they may replace my human legs. Do it quite often.
Lost George, that's her name.
I was. Well. I need to bring these as good as I can.
Was counsel coming?
No. That's right.
Yeah, well.
They look the same.
Same in both, just one's a little bigger than the other. All right. Mayor, I'll make a motion while you come back from recess. Nobody in agreement? Casio? Back in nineteen forty-nine? I like to. We'll make a decision. All right. If you don't mind, I'd like to move things around a little bit. We'll go down to a presentation from, um. Ms. Carla McCoy, where's she at?
She should be under. High five drive.
There we, high five drive. I'm six. New business. Ms. Carla McCoy. Come on up here. Sure. Can, can you hear? Karen, what here? Oh.
I'm loud.
Good deal. And she can be loud now. She can be loud.
I get, I get embarrassed if I come up there. I'm embarrassed anyway, but I really get embarrassed. I am the resource development coordinator for the Child Advocacy Center of Logan and Mego County. And my job is to let the communities that Logan and Mego County knows the services we offer. And what we offer is like, we provide elderly with children who have either given self-identified or witnessed. Crime by specially trained interviewers. We have trauma-focused child care, caregivers of children, non-acute medical care by specially trained D V F sexual assault nurse examiner, which that is what I'm saying. And we did referrals for any service they may need. Our main thing is our forensic interviews. And we are a child-friendly, we have a child-friendly environment, our office. They come in and they test. And they only have to tell it one time. They don't have to keep repeating to other agencies, to the police, to the prosecuting attorneys. They can tell it one time to us. And we have specially trained, we investigate, we do interviews. That's, that's what I have been most impressed about since I've been there. But we, and there's all of these services are free. There's no fee whatsoever to the family. All the services are free. We run on grants, donations, and one fundraiser a year. And that is, it takes place every April. And is also child abuse awareness month, the month of April. So that's what we do are giving fundraisers. And what it is called, it is called the high five drive. And what you do, you get five dollars for a hand. And the concept of it is you are giving a high five to a child that was brave enough to come forward and tell their story. And all the monies that are collected in Logan and Mego County state and Logan and Mego County. It does not go throughout the state. This is state wide. And last year we raised the most money state-wide. So we, we get to keep every dime we collect. And that's why, that's my main reason for being here. I, I bid to other council meetings to be very successful. It helps us with the children. And that, that's what's important, I think, with the children. And I've never worked in this field. Everybody that works there was with DPS or, I was in banking for twenty years. So it's used the way on my way that I'm learning and I feel like I'm contributing something and helping you somewhat. So I, I really get you. I really like my job. I feel like I'm helping.
Do you have any little hands with you?
Yes, I do.
Here. Oh, there we go. Let's have a demo.
I've got hands, I've got bracelets, I've got these beautiful bracelets that I would give maybe if you like that a lot.
Where's the hands? Where's the hands?
Oh, well, thank you, but I, you bring these glasses.
No, really, I don't do it.
But she's a local girlie and she marries, she. And we have the hands.
Now, these hands. Anyone, and usually we ask for five dollars.
Yeah, they're five dollars a hand.
At least. And what you do is you donate five dollars. Put your name on it and then these will be displayed somewhere.
At Chapmanville L B and T.
At the L B and T for this, in this area.
We have it displayed throughout the L B and T, but this will be, these will be at Chapmanville since we're in Chapmanville.
But anyone can purchase a hand. Uh, what, what's being asked here is a challenge has been by, um. Town man, say Logan, town of West Logan.
Yes.
Have all donated. Mind if I tell them?
Not at all. I thought Jeff was going to do that for me. Does he fit in H M eighty?
Oh, yeah. Town of West Logan was what, one fifty?
It was a hundred and five.
Hundred and five.
Yes.
And then the town man was five hundred. And Logan was seven.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. Now, that, that came from the council out of the, uh. Their town's fund. So there's the challenge that's before us. Yeah, here, I'll bind up.
Where you give them? I got two fives right now.
There you go. Got that over there. Listen, listen here. You give me three fives.
Did I give you a P and B?
No, that's all right. I'm sure one will make its way around.
Okay, I got that one. Okay, I got that one.
I'm just gonna have you chuck it at me.
See, I gotta get you changed. Hands a sign. I get paid molly, so I like. Going different places, I just like a little bonus.
Now, we've individually donated here. Anyone like to make a, uh, motion for a donation from the town itself to this?
That you need fifteen, right?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd either, I'd like to make a motion for, for the town to contribute to this. As far as the amount?
I'll leave that up to you all. Kind of not, uh, mind you, this was a challenge. Um, we don't have to be number one, but I don't wanna be bothering either. May I make a, may I make a suggestion?
There he says something.
Two that, the two that, uh, what, what'd you say?
I said I make a recommendation for seven fifty.
That's very generous. I have a motion for seven fifty?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much.
Hang on. So, we have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion or suggestions? All those in favor? And, and you opposed? Wait, let me tell something. No, he's already had his meeting. But when I tell John, we beat him.
Oh, John, for man.
Yeah, yeah.
My sister's recorder at man, the city of man, and I messaged her today and said, city of Logan.
Thank you all very much.
But thank you so much.
That is something that, uh.
And you will be put on our page as a sponsor on our, the C A P page for the whole state. Then it just stays here.
I'd like to make a second motion if we can. I would put dollars to that, just so when you can beat.
Here, we include the donations we made personally in that.
I, I don't know about that. That's a hard question. This is my first year doing it.
I think that would count. We've already, everybody's bought at least one hand, is that right? One, two, three, four, five, six, I would make it seven eighty. Okay, did you?
No, I see somebody's coming into my office tomorrow.
Let me tell you, no, uh, Rob here is very generous.
Yeah, but we have a, I think it's all the.
Oh, on Thursday, Thursday, yeah.
Okay, good deal, good deal. So, that makes our total donation of seven hundred eighty dollars.
I will, what?
Rob's gonna send you the text. Then I'll go up tomorrow and post one.
Like, like for Chapmanville City Council and the individual amount in Chapmanville City Council. Uh, what each, seven fifty was, that's how she has been listed.
Alright.
Do they have that set up to where you can electronically do that?
They do, and I can give you the paper. If anyone wants any, you can hang it somewhere or. I've got me, and also you'll need this.
You said it's a tax deductible.
Yes, it is tax, yes. And here is our nonprofit identification number, but you'll need that.
This man right here proposed that.
Well, there you go. And if anyone would like to hang these anywhere that you know where they could be. Hang up, you can, you think, you are code and donate. And it goes directly to us, not any of the others.
And so you'll understand, uh, it's, it's statewide, but every area gets to keep the money that they raise. And it, it does go for a good cause.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you. We'll see you at the next meeting.
And I would definitely let you know future when you all get.
Wanna do that, Rob, real quick, everybody?
Carla, real quick, who, uh, whose check need to go to? Does it need to go to Logan County?
Let me give you a card.
Enough it need to go to Logan County Child Advocacy Center or West Virginia Can?
Uh, Logan County Child Advocacy Center.
Alright, everybody gather around, of course, we need our hands. Tell God it's a good cause, you've done a good thing. Really good.
I need a break extras.
You all, we, we just all gather around somewhere here.
Hold your hand up.
Let's get out in front of the speakers so we don't have it.
Oh, I gotta get Rob one.
Yeah, we're both Williams. Williams, I'm Williamson. All depends on what part of England our forefather dealt around.
Oh, Stacy, I didn't give you a chance. Don't make, I'm sorry. Come in the middle there, Carla. Oh, somebody in here, body between me and Harry. Rose between the two of them. I'll put it over top of her head. Take one like this, it will take a, a real one.
That's the one that I posed though.
You gotta have a little fun, you gotta laugh.
Thank you.
That was the fun part of it. Next item on the agenda will be.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you all so very much.
Very well.
And I would like to come and get some more things.
Mr. Williamson, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you do not mind, I would also like to move around some. Okay, items, I would like to move the I T contractor biz proposals to the top, because we also have in attendance a couple of people from the. Uh, bids. We're here. If we wish to hear from them, uh, so if you will flip to the back. Back of what is in your April folder, we have four. Bids slash applications. For I T work. Give me a moment. I will read you what I sent to people. The email went out to everyone. Was you receiving this email because you expressed interest in contracting out I T work for the town of Chapmanville? Town's computers consist of twelve police computers, six to seven office computers. Possibility of adding more, as well as web development and content responsibilities. The idea is to have you on as a tainer that covers certain normal work. Ideas the town would like to work towards slash work expected include. Informing the council of decisions needing to be made for our computers, including but not limited to networking security upgrades if needed. Occasional council meeting attendance may be needed. Technical support during number of work hours, setting up town emails for workers and officials that operate under a master account. Can be accessed once employees no longer work with the town for FOIA and regular retention purposes. Web co, web and content development, including but not limited to web design and updating website as directed by a designated person. Integrating payment for town bills into the website, posting town ordinances on the website. That was the gist of it. So we received. Two. Two bids for contract work and an application for somebody to be a employee of the town. Uh, first you will see is Golden Dome Digital. They are who we had before. Uh, see their, sort of this web development content curation. Right. Uh, the web development content curation, I T consultation support, as well as a description of. Services, they are the first three pages. After that, the ones who are in attendance tonight, Toll Solution. Uh, they have provided estimates, well, scope of work as well, really an I T maintenance and support. And a little bit more, uh, detail as to. Uh, how they expect to do some of our emails and such with the Microsoft three sixty government G five information. After that is James Childers. He put in an application for employment. Uh, I, he was included on the, because I got his application for employment before. I sent out, uh, the email asking for additional information and bids. And I didn't receive anything after that.
I don't think you bothered to look at it.
However, that works. We do not have to choose one of those people if we do not want to. We can talk about it. We can talk with Toll Solutions here this evening. I wanted to present these items to you, and if we wanted to move forward with any of them, or. Handle it for another meeting, we can do whatever the council wishes to do, but. If anybody'd like to hear from Toll Solutions themselves, they are here.
I would like to hear from Toll Solutions.
Gentlemen, you have four.
We're a few of these. Basically, we've been in business for sixteen years together and. Twenty-seven for me individually and over thirty for, for Jay. We've got several other employees that work with us. They care of small businesses throughout the state and the surrounding states. You fit right in the area, the amount of. Employees that we normally handle is anywhere from five to fifty, so you fit right in that sweet spot for us. We partner with another business to do our web development, or the one that does our website. Kind of like cars. Don't necessarily go to the same place to get your oil changed, keep your gas. Completely different skill set, so. Website design is more artistic, I'm technical. I stay out of the, the website part of it. That's why we partnered with, uh, somebody else that they are included in that bid. We included it as two hours a week, which I followed up and asked about how much you were expecting and that. Followed up. With twenty computers, we kind of estimated about how many hours that you can expect per month. Needed for support. That's where we came up with those numbers. If you have any questions at all, happy to answer them. I didn't include the, uh, your Microsoft emails as a direct cost from us, because it'll save you money if you buy it directly. Because you're a government entity, you can get a better price than I can. That's kind of the short and sweet spiel. Uh, if you'd like to know some of the other people that we work for in the area, I'd be happy to give you a list.
Consider web design is included in the.
Yes, yes, it's just we don't personally do it. We have a subcontractor company we've been working with for years. That, that they take care of our website and any customer of ours that needs it.
That would be the problem solver's result.
Yeah, like the great guy, they've been. They've done us a good job over the years.
That kind of recommendation you just made as to us purchasing something versus going through you all to purchase, that's the kind of stuff we would be after, well, as far as.
Yeah, and that's the whole point is, I mean, I'm not gonna lie that, you know, we have to make a living. But I wanna do it the best way I can for you. And that's kind of been our, our motto throughout the years, is to take care of our customers.
And we'll be happy to work with you guys, you know, help you pick out the right pieces, right parts.
Yeah, there's a lot of like, again, as a governmental agency, you have access to things that on the commercial side don't. Right, so, you know, we're happy to steer you then, when it, when it will help you get a better deal, we'll steer you that way. Anybody have any, uh, questions?
We have problems at times within the office. Basically can talk more about it, but that's something that we, we need tech support on that. Of course, we could pick the phone up to call. But at times we've needed, not only with the web. But we're moving forward now to where we're going to be able to, uh, have, uh, you pay your bill online. You can use, you come in and swipe a credit card or debit card or what have. Lot of security involved. One thing I worry about being had. So, um, it. To me, it's a little more than just having a whip. All that has to be rolled into it. You're more than qualified to do that?
Yes. Now, we would not be the third, one thing I wanna say with that, we wouldn't be the third-party. Software company to do that. Which I'm sure. Coordinating with somebody to do that. We're happy to help you, we can secure it, we can get all that connected. Just, we stay away from that piece of.
We, we've already had that installed now, and it's getting ready to go into effect. And what we, uh, what we needed is someone. Every now and then come in and, and help. With a glitch we might have.
Yeah, and actually.
And then on top of that, our webpage. That we had set up some time ago, it's. Didn't go anywhere. Got a problem there. And a webpage is something we wanted, because we wanted to be able to. It's rather embarrassing when someone calls, hey, what's your webpage? So I can look up the ordinances, things of that nature. I'm just kinda sorry we ain't got nothing like that yet. Like it's that, that was initial thing we wanted. About two years ago, three?
And it's a thing that if it's not kept on top of, it starts looking.
So, and that's, that's what I'd like to have for this town. Cause I get on numerous. Webpages for towns, a little envious. Not gals, but I'm envious. I'd like to have something like that for this.
Yeah, Mike can definitely take care of that. And as far as the on-site, we, we kind of budgeted in there. With this many, uh, employees, you're gonna need about an on-site visit, average about twice a month.
And by right, the, the initial cost would be, uh, four thousand dollars to set this up.
Cause now initially, we expect to be here a lot more than twice a month. That's always the way it goes. The first six months, it's all this, these are the things that have just kind of been neglected. We get those taken care of, get things moving smoothly, things ease up.
Do we have a wa, a webpage?
We have the URL, the webpage is a note.
But we do, we still have.
But I just, I, I know.
But it still belongs to us.
Yeah, we're in control of that's the main thing.
I'd hate to lose that, that domain.
Now, Rob was the one who purchased that for us. That long ago, that's.
He's getting ready to check it. Hopefully they'll have it all over.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, George has a question.
Yeah, I, I, that was, I was just for me, thank you, for the rest of them.
Actually, um, the monthly fee for the, um, website design and setup. And then I turn around the maintenance and support monthly fee, that's twelve hundred dollars monthly. So, is that concrete, or is that something that we can negotiate with?
For at least the first six months, that's gonna be pretty, pretty set. Only because it's gonna take that for at least the first six months. More than happy to come back and go, okay. What's this look like now? But just based on twenty years of experience, that first six months, you're gonna come out ahead more than me.
And then on the paper here, it says includes eight hours per month, and then right under it says two hours.
That's two hours.
Update request, is that separate or?
That's just elaboration.
Cause it was too separate.
Basically, what he's saying is you've got eight hours for the policeman's computer breaks. Or, or computer breaks here in the office.
or, or computer breaks here in the office, and then you have two hours for the website. That's two different lines he's looking at, but, yeah.
This would include the, uh,
Yeah.
the computers we have in our
Yeah, that contract sits up with the computers here in the office.
Not crew, and a crew.
We have, we have computers and the police crews.
Absolutely, I do believe those were included in the original situation.
Yeah. I, I'll let them know about those.
He did the contract, so I'm, I'm gonna make sure I don't sell it under the bridge, but I'm pretty sure we took that total.
Twelve, four, six, and then as well, there's the ones here in the office, so this one, Stacy's, three up front.
So twelve and include
Yes.
the others also are included with the twelve. Just wanted to
Yeah.
Oh, that's Yeah, I use a dick squat on my personal laptop, so.
After, after the six months, I mean, you're negotiating the, the terms.
It depends on how many hours you're actually using, and we can talk about it then.
Okay. And references that you already have that are listed.
We've dealt with Logan Pediatrics for years, I was telling one gentleman, uh, Dr. Paces, who retired, I know she was right here in the city at one point. I worked for her for many, many years, and I know she delivered most of the kids down here. Uh, I go back into Wally Wagner era, if you know who he is.
Yeah.
First Empire. I was the IT person for, uh, First Empire back when it was down here in Logan. Dr. Kieran, that works out here in the thing, call him up, say, hey, Mike Maris, the vision consultants. Like I said, we do doctors, we've done doctors for many years, it's what the businesses were all built on.
You do any lawyers?
Uh, yes, we do, as a matter of fact, would you have a couple lawyers in Charleston? We, we are kind of branching out. And you guys are a part of our branching out, we're trying to get away from medical, because all hospitals are buying up our doctors and taking our business away.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm, I'm fairly well-established down here, I used to work for the Logan Regional Airport, uh, for marpat. I've been in that helicopter that was had wrecked last year on one, one occasion.
What's your name again?
My name is Jay Robbush.
Thank you for answering the questions that I had.
Yeah, I, I've got plenty, I've got plenty of references down here, many, many people know who I am.
Well, you've been up to the airport a little bit?
Logan Regional, absolutely.
The airport? Did you, did you tell me the
Logan Regional Airport.
Oh.
The one down in Logan. My name John, what's your name?
Michael Brook.
Yeah. Michael Brook in that area real good for it.
He's, um, he's, he's up at the, uh
No, I'm not, we're not in Charleston.
Logan Airport.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, he's not in Talley.
Logan, but
No, I agree with you, I know.
I like the Logan Country Club.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's, uh, here in Chapmanville, I remember.
Right on.
Yeah, I've been to golf courses on more than one occasion for the very good food.
Don't they? I'd like to appreciate it, anymore, anyone else have any questions? Alright. Alright, now, do you want to take up your part of it now?
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, we've got a long drive back to Charleston.
Thank you, thank you.
This is really appreciated.
Thank you guys very much.
If you have any follow-up questions, feel free to reach out.
Yep, thank you, yeah.
Take care, have a good night.
You too.
Be careful going home.
And however council wants to proceed with that, just let me know whenever somebody's ready to do something. We'll move forward with it, but that is with, with the amount of personal security leaks that I know has happened with people within the employment here, I, I feel that we need somebody on the IT side that knows what they're doing, can help lock everything down as good as it can be on the internet.
No worries, you're in the depth, especially with what we're getting into.
Yes.
We need, we need security.
So we need somebody. Whether that needs to be a special meeting, or whether you all want to talk about tonight, you all just let me know, and we'll, we'll roll with it.
Honestly, I, I think I'd like to research, like, they have a website down at the bottom of their page that I'd like to
I think that's why.
Yeah, just be able to see, dig into the, while we die, where it is.
And I'll be quite honest with you, the, um, well, I, I won't, I won't speak for him, he's not here. I'll wait him, he brings him.
Yep. Yep, yep, yep. So, there's nothing else?
Oh, there's plenty of, go ahead.
On to the next one. Uh, next thing on the agenda for my section was Town of Chapmanville media policies, uh, since we are broadcasting meetings on our page now, uh, I felt the need for a social media policy. Uh, tried researching a few online, and I've got a small amalgam of things right now. This is not this is not what it can be, this should not be necessarily considered complete, but it is a good start. For instance, the social media platform is the very first one saying that we will not have any social media platforms that aren't approved by the council, and I've listed the ones that we currently have. Uh, and within that policy, we could put down who the approved people are to take care of that social media site, so we have a couple admins and an authorized person, that authorized person can also be an administrator. The authorized person will be the person who would be making the, uh, posts and taking care of the front, front desk or front pages of work, the window. So people could go in, you know, they'd see the posts, they'd see the pictures, like Stacy would be the authorized person for the Town of Chapmanville, Tracy Vickers Community Center, obviously. And then admins would be people who could add new admins and take care of things behind the scenes as well. Uh, manager, then that's further explained in number two, management, social media platform roles. Once again, the administrators, authorized agents, uh, content, and this, this is where I like for Rob to look through things. Uh, what kind of content will not be allowed on the website, and that goes for, of course, the Town of Chapmanville and people interacting with it. So if somebody is using altered, physically threatening, harassing language, content that promotes, fosters, or perpetuates discrimination, inappropriate sexual content, so those kind of people, whether they can be blocked, or whether their message just gets removed, I would leave that to Rob for how we take care of that. But, one way or the other, we don't want that kind of stuff popping up on our page, because it is the internet, eventually it will. You can't stop it. Uh, official con, con content, uh, events, calendar invites, that kind of stuff, I didn't fill out interactions with users yet, I was, I didn't get to that. Uh, then we have things like personal social media. Like I was talking about before, we've had some personal social, or personal security snafus here in the office that didn't have to do with the town itself, it had to do with the people. So that's why you put things in there, like, personal social media will not be accessed on any device under provided by the Town of Chapmanville or its boards. Hopefully, you make that a personal thing and keep it away from the business side of it. Uh, it's not recommended for town social media to be accessed on personal devices, same thing. I'm not saying we can't, because there are security measures you can take, like two-factor authentication, that really help lock down the security of your personal account, and if we have things going on like that, like Stacy has to use her personal account to get into the Town of Chapmanville pages.
Well, yeah, to that extent, people message at all different hours, and I know Stacy responds at all different hours, so, I mean
I'm gonna put a stop to that, you're gonna work business hours.
And I have, well, even mine, for the people message about wanting to re- the community center, I get more messages personally than I do on the community center, because a lot of times, if they send a message, because I try, I think, it's ten or eleven o'clock.
Town chat.
I'll try to wait and look at it.
Oh, you should have done that.
But then, if they can do it on air, but then I'll get like a free, if I'm not friends with them, I'll get a free request and a private message, because I'm not responding to that one. But I get way more, because people know that I'm, I'm here, and I get way more messages.
And I know a lot of people who have small businesses who have the same thing happen, they just message you directly instead of the page.
Yeah, oh, I get way more messages.
And we might have a policy about making sure that you only use the town stuff for that, you know, just kind of like, hey, guys, you need to message me over here on this, or even just respond from the town page. You can log into that and respond through that master.
I always do.
Right.
Like, you know, just where it's a government entity, it's a little bit different, but I always do.
Right.
I'll respond to anything that's not like town stuff. The, as far as like with me and the centers, it's some of it kind of means employee, you know, but now with the town stuff, I will, I'll make sure that it's because it is employed there.
And I, I don't like things bleeding into your personal time, or your personal space, so I, I want these people to use the, the things that are provided for them, so, you know, they need those, be sending messages to the Tracy Vickers Community Center, which they can do. Or you can respond to them on the Tracy Vickers Community Center, and instead of responding directly from your email, but that's the other stuff, you know, it's
Right.
we're, we're getting too deep in the weeds.
We, well, and one thing with that, because a lot of times people, they know about the Tracy Vickers Center, and they know
Right.
but they've not liked the page, if they have not liked the page from there, I can message them.
That's true, they can.
So.
We'll have to see how that works.
I don't know.
Yeah. We'll have to see how that one works, so, but, once again, that's where we're rolling with this stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, number four, town email to go into effect, when town emails are set up, you know, and, and once again, that stuff, the rest of it's pretty much stuff in the future. Uh, town business to be conducted through town email, officers, employees will all be given a town email, so you'd have one, all of us would have our own individual ones. Uh, when someone leaves the employer, elected office, associate with town, their emails are a man on file for blank years for employee purposes, and Rob, I'll need your help with that, because I don't know how long we have to keep stuff like that.
Neither, Phil, but we'll
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. And then security, they, these are just general security issues that we can use on town, approved passwords manager will be used for all town associated online logins. And what, the good thing about a password manager is it can be set up like we were wanting the email setup, where we can have a master account that can get into those when somebody leaves, and we can put that over on the next person. That way, we don't lose passwords, we don't have somebody trying to write down everything, or not being able to read something. It's sitting right there, it's a copy-paste deal, password managers are wonderful.
Yeah.
Uh, once again, we're going, I'm, I hate to harp on personal security, but it, it's happened to a lot of us. Uh, all accounts accessed through town devices will use two-factor authentication, I need to put down if available on that one. And what two-factor authentication is, if you've not, if you don't know, when you log into something, it gives you, it kicks back and says, hey, we're going to text you a code, or we're going to call your phone and give you a code. Or there's a little app that's linked to a server somewhere else, and only you have the number that's in that app, and you can put that in. So there's different ways of this two-factor authentication to work. But it, that way, you know, we, once again, we, we try to have that level of security, especially where we're going to be dealing with payments and
I have all my accounts set up with who you have to protect.
Absolutely, and I don't know what that C was. Uh, I, I must have had half a thought and then went somewhere else.
I'm gonna ask what, what's an appropriate one.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll remember it later.
Okay.
But th- this is a start. Uh, obviously, there's a few things I need on that one before we accept it, I would like for us to accept that somehow in the next meeting. But that way, you all look through this. If there's anything that you feel needs added, if there's anything you feel is left out, or I mean
What you and Rob have talked about getting together on will be put in there, then we can have a reading of it.
Right.
Be prepared for, for
Well, it's, it's a policy, we don't have to, this isn't ordinance.
Okay.
So we can just read it once and be done with it. We just have to accept it, then it goes in the town policy book.
For some reason, I'm following. Well, there's an ordinance next. No, I know the ordinance is next, but I'm, that's why I was, I rolled back to look at it.
You're, you're just used to me doing ordinances all the time at this point.
And I'm loving it, so any other questions about, about that? And moving on to the next, updates on chapter.
Five A, I still do not have anything on that one, I apologize, but, so we're gonna move on to that one, I will have five A at the next one. Uh, yeah, I was having a hard time transcribing it over from what we have in there to something I can work with.
Well, good, because I thought I'd been shorted.
So, five B, I made updates to it, obviously, uh, since the last meeting. The top part has been added, of course, the ordinance to strike and cert men, chapter five B, the ordinance of Town of Chapmanville, that's the same thing I put on all of, all of them when I'm redoing them. Uh, the strikes and underlines could be the same since the last meeting, uh, except I have, hold on one second. In the event that startling sparrows, pigeons, or other similar birds are found to be a personal nuisance, number C, I added gardens to that, since the mayor pointed out, uh, last meeting that I don't have a farm in my backyard, I have a garden.
I think we allow farms.
Right, right, yeah. So, gardens, uh, uh, didn't change anything else there. D, I added D, uh, after some of our discussion last week as well. Due to concerns to public health and safety, birds are not to be fed within town limits unless, unless the person feeding said birds owns or has written permission from the owner of the property they are feeding birds on, so I'm not telling you you can't feed birds in your yard.
That was gonna be my question.
I, I'm saying, we shouldn't go to Hardee's parking lot and feed the birds.
There's no more Hardee's.
Right, well, food's parking lot, feed the birds.
But it, but anyway, yeah.
Right.
We're, we're getting a problem with pigeons.
Yes. Everything else?
Now, John, didn't you tell us what this is a bird sanctuary?
It is a bird sanctuary.
I told you, I want to have a barbecue pigeon.
Yep. Well, for good feeding them, they might leave.
We got rid of chickens.
What do you mean, we got rid of chickens?
Really?
They can still have chickens.
Boom, lock.
Oh, not a
Not, not the boom lock.
Yeah, they're roaming all over that car.
Was that what Sunday was?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
No, this, this was
Oh, yeah. With all that going wrong at one time, I had, I had to get rid of.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah. We got chickens around all over the place, we got pigs that get loose that the police have to catch, it's great.
Or my, right there.
Did we ever catch a pig?
No.
No.
Get them down on top.
They did go home, didn't they? Did they make it home? Ah, that makes me sad. So anyway
Seeing that on the picture.
Right. So, if it, if no one has any further questions about five B, if no one has any other updates they'd like to make to it, or any other changes, I would like to ask for a second reading motion, uh, for this one, and we'll have third reading and passage next time. I plead.
Let me see.
I got a motion.
Second.
I'll say. Have a second. Any further questions or comments about ordinance five B, or amendments, chapter five B, or ordinance of that bill? As it applies to building, blah, 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 anyway. Harry, no.
No, I need to change that. That's something I have to change, is it applies to buildings, that needs to be as it applies to bird sanctuaries.
Yes.
So with that change.
Need to strike the building.
Read that.
The very top.
Yeah. Do you understand the change being made there, council? I heard it very well.
Yeah. I was reading further down there.
Any question, comment? Harry, now, call for a vote, I'll lose in favor.
Alright. Alright.
Alright. Delph, I'll take care of you.
For the moment, I believe it does, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Moving on to C.
Doc? Well, I learned a long time ago, visuals are a whole lot better than anything else. I thought I'd bring a piece of our new road in. If you want to go over there to Gilbonnis and walk across the road to that culvert. It's that. We're gonna start breaking the road off more and more. Um, we was having a brand-new road put in. We've got, and I might go step on Harry, but we got drainage problems all over this town. We need to get hold of the park and highways and get them to come in here and, and possibly use them. Culvert repaired, they need to repair, um, I mean, Steve and them guys, they, they was up out of brands, I was out there when they struck the treads at water into the dirt trunk. Into the dirt trunk. And then they had to go up there and just like we just discussed, they gotta get that down there again in front of a raised for auto. Top our drains we do have from getting stopped up. I mean, we need to get a hold of park and highways to see who's liability or responsibility this is. Um, I don't want to be bringing our new road in. Or seeing it go down in that culvert. Um, and it's pretty bad right there. Uh, Ben, you were there. You seen that culvert?
Yeah, I took a look at it yesterday. Uh, there are two, three, four drains coming into that little hole. And not to mention there's the road slope coming off of Giovanni's parking lot and the road down into that hole as well. It, it, it's, it's chewing out right at, I mean, right at the asphalt level. Uh, so I, I did see one of the drains they had put in, and I think that was from the sidewalk project. There is what looks to be a blanket of, uh, concrete. I mean, it, it looks like a quilt. It's padded. It looks, looks padded.
You're talking about where the sidewalk work was done?
Yes.
That's what they did all throughout, not only here, but throughout various areas within the state. Department of Highways had that done by contractors.
Right.
Uh, to make them
I, it looks to me like something like that would help. I mean, the water could cascade down that instead of chewing into the, the soil underneath the road. The guardrail is, uh, if you look at it, I, I'm gonna say probably three foot off the ground in, in that specific shot.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
It's been called to their attention. Um, they're doing, uh, assessments right now of damage that's been done, uh, because of recent storms. And it's all in, uh, preparation to make application for, uh, declaration, emergency declaration, so they can get FEMA to help pay for some of this. We have several areas through town. When I say several, we've only really have a couple that are, that are in need of attention. Um, that's one, and that's been coming in for some time, but it really got hit this past
Yes.
past weekend. Uh, we have, um, some areas, um, robbed of drive. Just another. We have, um, up here at, um, next to, uh, Gino's, um, Madison Street, correct? Goes up through there. It got hit very hard. So, and they, they were supposed to have been in town today. Making notice of that.
Remember all the gardens and both those hollers, rocks, trees, branches, whatever, ended out on Main Street. These good boys out there cleaning that up.
They did a very good job. We, and, and I'm gonna tell you, as, as bad as it looked here, had you taken a drive around part of the county, just right here, Northport and Big Creek and Big Island. It pretty much got blocked off. What came out up through there. So.
Okay, the next thing I want to talk about. And I really don't want to talk about it no more unless we're trying to do something. Is over here at this boat dock, it's, it's called Chapmanville Boat Dock and, and River Access. Um, I got quite a few people I know that go over there and go fishing. Um, they would actually, I've seen families over there during the summer, have their kids out there swimming, just chilling out. I would like to see us get a hold of D and R, Stack Road. See if we can go along that top bank where the park is and put two benches in there and then under the bridge, put two picnic tables. And see if the state will help cut them weeds. Now, I've cut one myself over there. Uh, still we changed all that way down that bank, so I quit there. But, uh, I'd like to get a hold of D and R and Stack Road and see what we can get them to work with us. And get that place cleaned up a little bit and looking a little bit nicer. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, if we can get a letter to them, we'll meet with them.
You know, we've looked at, that's not within
Oh, it's not within, I'm not saying us do it.
Yeah, but it's close to them to do it, see if they can do something.
See if we can get that taken care of. Well, I'll go over there and help and do the maintenance, whatever.
Leonard, there's nothing says, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, council. But I think we can do things like that close to the town limits, you know, and helps with the community, what have you. I think we can do things like that. The only thing I would ask is that we, uh, we do something to make picnic tables and benches or what have you. Anchored in the grounds where they're not carried off, you know?
No, the waters, I'm, I'm pretty big table, dumb native.
I mean, we, we had, we lost one right out here. You, you go figure that out. Picnic table.
I watched the picnic tables from Logan float by my house when we had that last really big one.
Oh, that's funny.
Did you just stand hook, pull one in?
I, the water's too fast at the time.
That would, that would have been a catch.
I don't know if I could have made it down to Harz to get them in time.
Okay, the last thing I want to bring up. Our brands. Uh, we had a little young lady here once, Julie. And she's more than willing, um, to, I've already mentioned to you, we've got about six places in Chapmanville sidewalk up there. And I'm not talking about going off the sidewalk, refilling people's holes sooner, whatever. It's the sidewalks. We've got about six good sized places need to be done. And I believe if we get people looking for them, we find some grant money to take care of the sidewalks. So I'd like to, to channel to everybody and give me permission to talk to Julie about how we start looking for these and anybody else we can get.
We have invited, or I have personally invited several, um, people, if they have an idea for brands that, uh,
She, she had a meeting out, I don't remember which one it was, but she, she said she'd be willing to try to look for some folks.
One option that, that exists is the West Virginia Grant Resource Center. And they, they are, they will write one grant for us at a time, not one of these plug and play style. Uh, I, you know what I'm saying? But, um, it, you can approach, or we as a town can approach them, um, to see what they can do. And then it's, I mean, it's volunteers over there. Uh, just, just trying to, to help out. Like, I guess their, their funding comes out of the grants that they write, but, um, I, that, that's one option that we could, we could look at as well.
As well, yeah. We could use any help we can get, Julie, and that's for the
I mean, the more people we got listening for grants for us, it's some more problem to develop where we're gonna be. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna do where I'm not a talker. I don't want to sit here and talk about something, meet that, meet that. At least they need to get nothing done. That just folks me. We waste time. But anyway, you know, Harry Freeman has some stuff that I want to talk about, but.
Can I have five minutes since there's something, there's an emergency here?
I'm making a motion. Make a motion. We
Second.
Take a quick break.
Quick, quick, call for a vote.
Two seconds.
You know, more about that, this, I, I
All right, go ahead.
The party's on your property, I know, but I'm more than willing to work out. Oh, gosh. I think I'm gonna take the, I'm gonna run back outside what you were saying.
The doc second, you first said it. Yeah.
Thanks again, everyone. I really
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
I do want to be rude and just talk.
That's okay.
Oh, no, no. Once you're done here, go ahead, get out. Don't wait on us.
Thank you.
We'll be here all night.
All right, we can be. I don't want to be, but we can be. Well, at least till six o'clock in the morning.
Um, I don't know if I'll be able to make it to those. I'm supposed to speak, put out an extra field of
I, I don't want
No, and, and I'm shooting, I'm during work hours, I'm out in the dog, I don't want to talk to anybody.
Uh-huh.
I'm
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
If, if I don't have time, I'll let you know. I got you, so. I mean, you can stay in tomorrow, I've been doing training and
The following
I wish that they needed to I think I haven't turned you last, but Oh, good. They want their tests. That's, I, I, I can, whenever I do the, the class, feel comfortable signing up for the test and get to it.
What'd you do that for?
Uh,
Cause I've got the pilot institute class.
That's it.
You just pay them and then you go to the test?
At, at the end, at the end of the
You still gotta pay for the test, though.
At the end of the class, it's, it's built in.
I like those classes, by the way.
Hey, thanks.
Those new?
Uh, no.
Is there a new thing they have?
Can't remember. I can't see what brand they are without another very nice system. So I mean, I think I bought
Did they, did they have the
I think I bought stuff for a while there.
Oh, you don't talk about
My stuff was all
Yeah.
Oh, by this, you get lifetime access to everything. You know, it's like
I think our classes from Zen
Yep, just definitely do it. Right. Um, but I gotta check it mine. Modules are on the broadcast.
Just a white, I care.
I love it, I was mm, let's see what this is. Of course, I did file like five of them, grandma, out, Arkansas. Just a story, picture.
And hers was, uh,
Went out the middle of the leg and
Hmm. And six hundred dollars.
Some, some of them
I showed her the same hair, same brand and everything.
And, and the thing is, like, my favorite thing is four hundred foot's our limit, but everything else flies below four hundred foot. Right. And then if it flies into us, we're gonna be the one feeling drunk. The, the flying over, moving in people.
I mean, I got my three, four pairs.
Yeah, I'm done, yeah. What's an emergency to some people?
Well
You know, ain't necessarily an emergency, but it is
Yeah. It, but the, the flying over, moving people, moving vehicles, railroads. Yeah. I mean, to, to an extent, I sort of get that. Very much. Fish it up, but what's in, what are they?
Right.
But
Yeah, send it right into
If you want to sit there and watch any of YouTube video. Including the On our, your own training thing, it's like What are they doing? Look, see, moving people on the sidewalk. You get that drunk. As long as you're not hovering above, as long as you're moving, then you're okay. You can cross them, but you can't sit there.
Nine, eight, twenty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, how many?
And you need videos.
No, every once. Every single one. Yes. And, and, and Just Business from going out. Yes. Same chain. Yes, occasionally they do. And the fines that they levy on those people as they go out.
And that kind of stuff, slams.
Right. But it's not everybody. And the odds are low enough that you get caught, the people are gonna do it.
Right.
You'll get some good stuff, man.
And then I, I really have questions like, right? Flying in the Kennedy's Fairforth.
That's just a way
I know, I know.
I, I know that, I know that.
America, what are you talking about? And, and you're talking
And all kinds of mayor miles.
Yeah, up radius.
You have a motion to come back in?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All right.
All right, I'm done.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, unanimous? Moving on now, uh, we're down to Mr. Destrocher. I'm a day comprehensive plan.
Bill and I, well, mostly Bill, this, this month, uh, still trying to get quotes from people, um, if next month, if, if we were gonna have what we have, honestly.
We actually did hear back from Pickering today. They asked some more questions and said they'd try to send something else, else out, so. It didn't make it to me today, but I'm hoping I'm here this week.
Um, next month, hopefully we'll have the quotes for, for you all to look at and see where we go from there.
I'll make a motion to table a comprehensive plan.
Table, yeah, I'll second.
Good deal.
All those in favor of tableing?
Aye.
Any others? Next item on the agenda, Mr. Freeman, your turn.
The dock got into most of it, but, uh, there is some storm drain, drain damage and and while I'm happy if we can get the state road to help, but this is inside town. Uh, you know, I hate to waste money, but we got money, we all spend it to do some repairs. Try to fix some of this stuff or make sure the water's getting diverted where it needs to go. As well as giving the, the drain cleaned up, cleaned out, working proper. But there's
Council, you want to address the liability of diverting water?
Yeah, we gotta be careful. I mean, that's, uh, number one, the DOH, it's in the code, that DOH is responsible for drainage issues. So, and if we divert water onto somebody else, you know, if we go in and do the work and then we end up diverting the water onto somebody else and it causes them damage, then we're responsible.
I'm not wanting to divert on, but get it off the road into the drains.
Yeah.
Uh, things tipped right or get the, the drains lower than the road or whatever, instead of the, Washington just starts uh, working right. Uh, again, up here, the, I guess, the raise washes across
Madison Street. Madison, okay.
And we need something to be done.
That comes out of that whole hollow right there and it comes off the
Yeah.
the business lot there.
That's our situation. We, we need to get something. Uh, again, I'm happy.
And then as you travel north, partners travel north, about every business or open spot down through there, water's coming through. When I realized we have a hill to the east of us, river to the west, the water's got to go somewhere. And it's gonna roll off the hill and cut across and hit towards the river. And when this town was built or developed, those places didn't exist. Uh, at that time, the water had, I mean, I can remember it was mostly gravel lots down here. And the water just soaked into the ground. You don't have that now.
Yeah.
Uh, like where the funeral is, was swamped one time, where the first Baptist church was with the cold swamp.
Yeah.
So there's been some areas that were pretty, pretty wet. And that's like that's all.
That's somebody's car.
Okay. I hear it now. I'm, I'm sitting here with so
Yeah.
Somebody's music.
Somebody's music, yeah.
Yeah.
Jerry, there's two main drains up the harbor at Gina. One of the main drains is catching it really good. It's big enough to flow it off. Uh, I do have dive tablets. I'll run down here, y'all, please, to make sure. But the other drain, it's totally broke where they put the new water lines and everything else. And that's the other culvert, why all of that floods out and shows all that lot down here. And there's just nothing we can do at that. But there's other two drains also
There's gotta be something. There's gotta be something.
Replace the whole drain from almost up there to where the state trooper lives on down to the back end of the, where it goes into the railroad deck.
Well, that could be a concentration for some of our grant writers, too, is looking for any, any monies that work on our storm drains.
I'd like to be able to at least find the drain in the McDeveck place that's been cut open.
I mean Once, once again, we gotta be very careful about road, about how we touch those because
Well, I'm saying that. I mean, state road had a drain there. I hit it when I was younger. I'll say that. Uh, it was
That's something we need to, we need to look into. You're right.
Does, does ditch maintenance fall on us?
Uh, ditch maintenance is usually the DOH as well.
Um, we, we take care of some of it.
Right.
All right, because, um, DOH, uh, just a little quid pro quo with the Department of Highway.
Right.
And our people do take care of some of that drain.
My, my thoughts are like this drain up here on
The ditch.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of it's mowing and weed eating just to be able to keep it plugged. Otherwise, just stuff gets caught up in it. So, I mean, we have a little bit of maintenance that we can do with it.
We do.
As far as pulling ditches.
Yes, yeah, that's DOH, yeah.
We, I, I don't want our people out there, um, dredging a ditch. Let's put it that way.
Right.
But when we see an area, and we've, we've got one, or maybe it's more than one drive. Then when they make their delivery, they gotta pull out on Route 10 to go north. For some reason, they can't make that turn. Steve knows what I'm talking about.
You ought to watch some type, type of trailers in that giant parking lot, Mr. Freeman. They can't, they can't drive around a flower bed, they have to hit the thing.
Yeah, I know, but I'm talking about this one out here, and after he makes his delivery. You'll, you'll see how it tears up the ditch line, our people, they go down there and straighten it out. But we'll, we'll continue to do what we've been doing and try to find out some department highways.
Yeah, uh, do you want to do that, Doc?
Pardon?
Uh, I have one more thing I want to say a little bit to.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. No, finish up with what you're doing.
If, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll go ahead and message Julie this evening about. Possibly getting grant for, or writing for grant for.
Storm grain.
Storm grain maintenance. Maintenance or even, i- if there's one out there, it's like, oh, here's a bunch of money for reinstallation of everything.
Sure, gotcha.
I doubt there's one that big, that'd be a huge one.
Okay.
Don't get what you don't ask for.
Yeah.
Look at our government now, they're throwing money left and right.
I see the bull.
All right, what else did you have, Mr. Freeman?
Okay, this is, this is old, 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 old business. And Second Street was paid, was taken over by a business down here in town. They're supposed to have signed back over some property to the town. For another Second Street. Something should be done, and they should have signed that over, they have not signed that over yet. And we're now talking a number of years.
Sign it over to DOH. That's, that was between them and DOH, that's always been between them and DOH.
The whole, the whole time, we owned the property, the DOH owns the, the maintenance.
And the DOH.
What property?
Purchased that property from you for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's between DOH and dignity. It's been that way since day one. I've, I've said that when Raimy was mayor, I said, we don't have a dog in this hunt. Because that was always between dignity and DOH.
Well, well, what about that, them supposed to pay that?
Okay. All right, that, that will eventually be paid, all right? All right, that and some other things, and the repair you're talking about down there, that's, that's on their to-do list. Plus, um, a drain we've been wanting to get over, uh, just, well, by Perry Brothers. That pool of water there, they're going to try, they're not going to try. They're, eventually will be a drain right there. Take it to the river. Okay? That's several things to start looking at.
Okay.
You're done.
But I've got a copy of the deed where. I'll look here and see if I've got it scanned in. I should have a copy of the deed where you sold them that property for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's between the DOH and dignity, where they exchanged, uh, deeds to the property.
So, Rob, I have a question. Genuine, that's a genuine question, because I really don't know, since the property swap hasn't occurred. It has occurred.
Hmm, the deed should be on file, wouldn't it?
Well, I don't know, I don't think that the road is owned by the public property yet, that's not the last I heard about it from, uh. Certain other people. I believe that, that they have said that it's still hung up in, or right away at the DOH. So, once again, genuine question, if the property swap hasn't occurred.
Okay.
I'll change the phrase, if the property swap hasn't occurred, what's to stop people from driving down the. Public property and through a fence that's blocking a public. That's blocking public property.
I guess the fences what would stop.
But you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying there, we, we, we've got a road in town that has a.
Yeah, let me look, uh.
Hosed off.
Right.
Yeah.
So, are we going to get a road back or are we not?
Well, I think that's what they tried to have on him paid.
Right.
They've been trying to negotiate that for some time. And once the Department of Highways paves it, um, here's the problem, at the end of that. This private property once again.
The road is buried back?
Yeah. I'll show you sometime.
I'll see if I can pull, uh.
All right, in the meantime.
That's what else from. Tax map, and I'll try to show you.
In the meantime, I have a request here, and it, it's not on the agenda, but I didn't get this till today. Um. It's from the Chattenville Public Library and Mayor and Town Council. Chattenville Public Library Board of Trustees would like to nominate Brian Runyon to fill an open seat on the board. Blah, blah, blah. Um, details about the code and all that, and uh. I've spoken with Harry about the gentleman. He, he advises or his advice was, Brian will make a, a good, a good member. So, can I get a motion to. Report Mr. Runyon to the library?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Any? Any discussion? Very none. Call for a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
He's a very nice young man, I think. He'll do us a great job.
And if you don't mind, Phil, because I know you're next. I have a proclamation here. Um. And this is for the Autism Spectrum Disorder. A proclamation of the town of Chattenville. Whereas autism spectrum disorder. Known as ASD. Is developmental disability that can cause significant social communication and behavioral challenges. With signs that begin during childhood and typically continues through a person's life. And whereas many people with ASD also have different ways of learning, processing information. Or interacting with or reacting to things. And these individuals are classmates, are colleagues, friends, and loved ones. And greatly contribute to their strengths, talents, and abilities to their communities and the common well, well. State.
Well, I can change that. We can wrap that up this evening.
Yeah. Whereas autism varies greatly from person to person with, with no two people being alike. And whereas in, uh, twenty twenty-three, the Center of Disease Control reported that approximately one in thirty-six children. In the U.S. is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, ASD. And whereas, there is no true cure for autism. But a hol- a holistic system of therapies and supports. Can meet the needs of individuals and their families and whereas. Numerous member-led organizations throughout West Virginia. Provide support and services to autistic individuals and their families. And advocate tirelessly at all levels of government for their full inclusion and opportunity in our communities. And whereas Autism Acceptance Month emphasizes the need for public awareness to promote acceptance, celebrate the differences. And prioritize the inclusion of autistic individuals and their families. And honors self, uh, advocates. And all who work every day to create more opportunities in our communities. And whereas this month and every month, we celebrate the numerous ways individuals with autism enrich our world. Now therefore, the town of Chattenville does hereby recognize April of twenty twenty-four as Autism Acceptance Month. And we call this observance to the attention of our citizens. And witness counsel. I here and to set my hand this day of April sixteenth, the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four. And the establishment of the town of Chattenville. Seventy-sixth. Got a motion to sign this proclamation?
Information.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bring y'all another copy soon.
Any opposed? All right, couple things need to change here, go.
Yes. Got them, I already got them changed.
We are not a Commonwealth. And we're not, we're not Virginia, we're best Virginia.
That's right, we are. I've already got all the stuff changed, we'll.
I figured you did, my man. Thank you all very much. Phil, your turn once again.
Last thing. Great. Uh, we received an invoice this year for great canal resource.
That's a greater canal recreation conservation development.
Recreation Conservation Development Authority. Uh. We went ahead and paid it last time it came up, because I, I thought, well, shoot, we're a member, we need to pay dues. I, I've not heard of us, of us doing anything with them, do, do we do anything, do we still want to be a member?
Chair of the board.
Oh, you're vice chair of the board, see, I didn't, no, I couldn't find anything online about them either. It's like they're a ghost, I can't find anything about.
Really?
Really?
It's a national thing, this is our region.
I got you.
And I've, I've secured several small grants.
Oh, shoot, I would pay that then.
And if anybody had, if anybody had. We could put up a call, a couple of small tunnels here. And if anybody has need of pollinators. You know what pollinators are? The flowers which attract bees. I can get you fixed up real quick. And that's what the grants we've got. And I intend to apply for a grant once we do this work down here. Okay? The only thing about the grants we write, the majority of the time, not the majority, it's not, pretty much every time. You have to either have the work completed or be. Beginning work before you can be reimbursed, and that's what passed before.
Right. But, so, since everybody, just to make everybody aware, the dues are two hundred and fifty dollars. But I have no problem going to signing it, I just didn't, I hadn't heard anything about it since. A long time, so that's all right. It's, I know we're active and that it's a thing, I, I have no problem. That's all I got.
All right, any other business right real quick before we sit to the next meeting? Next meeting.
About twenty-one.
What did we decide earlier on the?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-first. We can't meet on the fourteenth, that's, that's voting day.
Seventh.
Huh?
I have no problem, seven.
Definitely better, yeah, I'd, I'd rather do it early instead of late.
We sent, we sent to Vickers for the twenty-first. So.
Have to be the same.
I know. I, I don't have to. You want to do the seventh?
Seventh works for me.
Yeah, like. Seven? I don't have any, I don't, the first week, will the financials begin?
I think they haven't done by themselves.
All right.
Should be able to have it done by seven. As long as we give them plenty of notice, I want them to know, and that way you'll.
Will that be a seven or six? Seven?
Seven. Okay. I have a motion for the seventh. Can I get a second?
I got a second.
All right. Any further discussion about that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I make a motion to adjourn? If there's not been any, uh, further business brought forward, counsel. Interpretate a motion to adjourn. Now, I've just had the motion.
I'll second. Yay!
You all?